Yeah.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to a very public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the discipline of the law, which is being just up for the general.
Okay, first item on the agenda is both of office for our new councilor, Mike Jekka.
If you wouldn't mind standing up, raising your hand, just repeat after me. I, Michael Jekka.
I, Michael Jekka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances and regulations.
And the ordinances and regulations. City of Rice Lake.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of councillor of the city of Rice Lake, Minnesota.
Of councillor for the city of Rice Lake, Minnesota.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
For the best of my judgment.
So help me God.
Signs. Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations and welcome. Tony, you can roll.
Mayor Heid.
Present.
Councill Johnson.
Present.
Councill Quaid.
Present.
Councill Henderson.
Present.
Councill Jekka.
Present.
All right, now we have the time for public discussion. This will be anything that is not on the agenda for tonight, that you may have questions or comments on, ask that you limit it to five minutes, and that you step up to the podium, which you'll notice we have moved over here now, and list your name and your address. And we ask for any future comments during the course of the meeting, that the same be done, that you recognize, come up to the podium, name and address, and then state any questions or concerns you may have. That being said, aren't there any? No, no?
I'm responding. Dan Leslie, four nine four two Arnold Road, and I want to say thank you to our new deputy. Since he came on board, Arnold Road is a much safer road. I know he was busy that first week. There's still a few that haven't caught on, so that the work isn't done, but I just want to go on record and say to thank him, and that he's doing a fine job. And so far, he hasn't seen his little car out, so we're good.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and make comment? Last chance. Okay, move on. We have some correspondence about our legal service rate increase.
So, a letter from Mike Corrie with Corrie and Rupee, noting that effective January first, their rates will be increasing to $270 per hour for general legal work, and then $285 per hour for development work, which that is usually passed through to the developer through escrow accounts. Rupee.
Is that much of an increase over last year?
$10, I think, $5, okay.
$5, okay. All right, consent agenda. All right, on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the August 11 council meet. We have executed claims from August 12, 2025, to August 25, totaling $36,175.23. We also have resolution 2525, waiving the Trump fee for, is that one LLC?
Yes.
Okay. And just as a little heads up on that, this is on the West Calory Road, they have already paid Trump fees, so if we were to ask them upon hookup now to pay again, we would be double billing, which we are allowed to do, but I'm not sure it's something we would like to do. So I am proposing that we just look at the consent agenda as a whole, unless there's an item that someone on the council would like to pull. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councill Johnson has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councill Quaid has made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Department reports, utility update reports.
Utility update, starting with water, Minnesota Department of Health, lead line service inventory. SEH will be sending out letters to eighty-four residents with unknown service line materials starting next week. Letters will include QR code to scan their phone, with their phone cameras, bringing them to a cell identification survey to complete. If they prefer, they can schedule this as in-house inspection. And so sewer, we've got the generator project that's going on currently still. Last week, we had Mark Dell where the generator concrete pads when we put, locate, recall in, and we're credible to start a time model for that. Sewer lateral inspections, twenty-six sewer lateral inspections were completed year to date. Of those eleven were in need of repair. Five have since been repaired, five are currently working. We are working with the contractors to get their repair scheduled. And one has not responded, and will receive a $75 on fee until it is repaired. There's money on here to the utility, new utility connections, there are currently eight properties in the process of connecting to city sewer and water for commercial, for residential. This report was prepared by Robin.
Sewer and water comparison spreadsheet.
Starting with water comparison, as of July, totaled from the city of Rice Lake that we build gallons is 1,404,494. The total from Comfort Systems was 1,724,260, with a total difference of 319,766, with a total loss of 1,936 gallons. Sewer. For July, sewer that we build customers was 1,119,239. Total for WLSSD was 1,626,500, with a total sewer difference of 507,261. For water, year to date, the 9511,69 gallons that Rice Lake has built, total water for Comfort Systems was 11,291,097, with a total difference of 1,553,028. Totals for sewer, year to date, water the city has built, 7,771,136. Total for WLSSD is 11,700,000, with a total sewer difference of 300, or 3,928,864.
Any questions, Shane? Thank you, Shane. Council reports. What have you got, Councill Jarra?
I have nothing.
Councill Henderson.
Well, I mean, we've just been doing a couple of budget meetings over this last month. I have checked out a few pickleball courts, and what that looks like in case we renovate the park next year, and just kind of throwing that around. And I think that's about it for me.
Councill Quaid?
Since our last council meeting, I attended with a couple of, with the mayor and many council, Hermantown council meetings, just to kind of see how they run things, and we're going to go with a more similar format. But we've been using the old mayor talking more than that. Then I attended a MIC meeting and a council meeting.
Councill Johnson?
I attended a fire department training at a vacant house at 4394 Martin Road, a couple Thursdays ago, and that was really awesome to see our firefighters trained there and what they were going through. I was really impressed, so you guys did a great job. I drove around with Councill Henderson to discuss city infrastructure. We're trying to do that at least twice a month, just to drive around and show them roads, waters, sewer, and Councill Jekka is next on the list. We'll have to figure that out in the future, don't rush or anything. We attended a county corridor and a Minnesota Power meeting to discuss the location of the future city road with Mayor and Tony Boondow last week, so we're working out details of where the road will be located, and we still also will be naming the road in the future. As you noticed, the contractor has worked on remodeling the office for Carly to make her door on the inside of the city hall area instead of access to the hallway, just to make it safer for her. And I attended the Hermantown meeting with mayor and councillor and city administrator last weekend. They have a nice layout over there, so I look forward to us moving in that direction. That's about it.
Okay. Later in this meeting, we're going to be discussing our agenda format, and when we move to a new format, there will be a mayoral update at the beginning of every meeting. We've not incorporated that yet, so I'm just going to incorporate that into my council report tonight as well. We received two comments in the basket at our last meeting. One of them is talking about other cities that record their meetings, put them online, either on their website or on YouTube, for any individuals that can attend. They're asking, is that something we might consider doing ourselves? Oftentimes, the minutes seem vague and hard to follow when you weren't there in the first place. That actually was also brought up at one of our staticings this past month. I've taken advantage of watching the Proctor City Council meeting in that format, just as I'm checking out, you know, the format for our agendas. And I, I thought it was a great service to offer to our residents, so we have asked to do a little research on that, and we'll find out how to do it, and we will do it. Probably not going to happen overnight, but it is, it is a goal, in my mind, to have it done by the end of the year. We'll, we'll see how it goes. Then we also received a comment, please put up all documents of the agenda on the screen. We have now done so. So that was a great suggestion, then everyone can see what we are seeing on our screens as we're having our meetings, so that will be a normal feature in our meetings from now on. On my mayor Facebook page, I had a few people that requested that we put a dump station somewhere in Rice Lake. That would be for campers, for any of you that don't know what a dump station is. I think it's a great suggestion to do some research on, and we have begun doing so. I can see where that would be helpful. Right now, I guess the closest is somewhere in Duluth, and there's none from here up to Island Lake, so I can see it being beneficial. I'm not sure that the residents of Rice Lake would like to expand the cost of doing that, but maybe we can get creative. Maybe we can find a current business in Rice Lake that would find that to be a service they'd like to add. So again, this is not going to happen overnight, but it is something that we will be looking into to see if we can facilitate this for, for our residents. Then as far as my council updates, a couple weeks ago, the four mayors of the area and the city administrators, so the Duluth, Proctor, Hermantown, and myself, and our administrators, had lunch together at Boomtown, and discussed the possibility of maybe sharing some services in the future, things like libraries. Right now, we have both Hermantown and Duluth building some athletic venues, so they did some discussion between the two of them to make sure they're not overlapping services, which makes it more economical and less expensive for both. Water treatments, economic developments, our fire departments, our police departments, we don't have a police department, but we obviously have sheriff services. It was just an initial meeting between the four of us, well, actually, eight of us, just to see how we can perhaps work better together as a full community, as opposed to four separate cities. Again, nothing concrete came out of that meeting, but it was just the opening of conversation, which is always a good thing. The council meeting at Hermantown, I thought was very informative. We went to both their pre-adjournment meeting and their regular city council meeting. They obviously have been doing this for a while. There were some, some great ideas that I, I think we should discuss further when we talk about our, our meeting agenda later on today. And then again, as Councill Johnson said, we, we had some meetings with both the county and the Minnesota Power about the Rice Lake corridor. Hopefully, construction on that will begin in 2027, but the planning phase does need to be done here in the next, let me say, September, do you need to have that done? Or is it October?
In October.
Okay. Because I believe they're also going to be setting up another public information session for anyone to come in, get more detailed information on the project, and express concerns that you may have. So those were the, the main things that I have for tonight. Any questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to new business. Rice Lake is going to be ten years old this October, and there are several of us that feel that that is a notable occasion, and we should do something to recognize that. Anybody have some ideas? And I will take community input on this as well. But first, council. Don't rush it.
We were talking in the office the other day about maybe getting a sheet cake and having it before council meeting, some Jews, like stuff like that. But kind of him and I and Tony have been chatting about it. We're open to thoughts. Everybody likes cake. Cookies? Cookies? Prunes. Here we go. Is that from Councill Henderson?
Yes. A donation.
You don't have to be bad all the time.
I like cake. I like cake. I think it's a good idea to do something, so.
I know one very ambitious resident suggested a parade.
Parade.
By Down Main Street.
So we're thinking cake is what we're going to do?
I think so. We got pricing and stuff on it, so we're going to take it.
Okay. Nothing better than just cake before a council meeting? Sweet.
That's great. I, I don't have ideas either, though. I like the parade. I do too, but we don't really have a good location.
You really don't.
I mean, we could march around the parking lot a couple times, I guess.
We could do that. Can we do like a slideshow or something of the last ten years? But that would just take time for someone to put that together. I mean, just playing while people come in.
Yeah, I, I think we were talking about maybe doing that, getting a couple highlights of new city buildings, infrastructure that has been constructed during that timeframe, and then where will we show that? Here?
Yeah, just up down there?
Yeah.
When we're out in town?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot of cake.
I know. Yeah.
So are we thinking cake like from five thirty to six until the meeting starts? Slideshow?
Does it have our line number?
Our? Five to six?
I think that's our.
Five to six.
Yeah. Because I have so much to do. We've got to send people home, okay? Boy, staff won't be able to open in the day.
All right, so what meeting works best for that?
I don't have a calendar in front of me. She has the thirteen.
Yeah, I threw up the date of October thirteenth, when I was researching like the actual date.
Isn't the twenty-second?
The twenty-second was the election. Is that what it was? Election Day? I read this up a couple weeks ago. I believe the thirteenth was the day that the administrative law judge actually signed the order.
Okay.
So. And that was.
That's good.
Well, it's not, because we don't, yeah, we don't have, I think the twenty-second is a Wednesday.
Oh, that Wednesday.
And, yeah, Wednesday. So.
But the other one is thirteenth, isn't it?
It's a Monday.
It is a Monday.
Yep.
Thirteenth it is. That was easy enough.
And if anybody has any other suggestions, we can certainly throw more out later, too.
Any suggestions from?
I was just thinking you could narrate the book, the city of Rice Lake book. You can do chat GPT and have it narrated, so you could just have like a PDF sounding voice. You know what I'm talking about? Do the book, so you could just give the history of Rice Lake, and it'd be like, gone. Or score and preview. I mean, like you could do anything you want.
I suppose it could be more than just the last ten years, right? If you could do the whole history.
A little history of Rice Lake, and if you just had it like AI-generated with narration, and just read the book.
And have it on our website.
And you would have it. I don't know if it would deter sales of the.
I don't think we have a PDF of the book. Pretty sure we do. I think so.
Who owns the copyright?
We do.
Okay. Okay.
We could look into that.
Right.
Okay, let's move on. The 2025 Halloween carnival donation letter, Tony?
Yes, so every year, I believe, we donate $500 to the auxiliary for the fire department carnival. Just wondering if we want to do the same this year, or we want to do a different amount that works, too?
I think the carnival is a wonderful event, and then my niece and nephews went to Mailer Young, which is a long time ago, so this has been going on a long time. I've been there, it's, the kids just have a ball. I think the volunteers even have more fun than the kids do. So it's certainly something I support. Council?
I support it.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, five, you're just part of it.
Five hundred?
Five hundred.
Yeah. We don't need a motion on that, right?
Uh, yeah, if we could do a motion.
Okay. I need a motion to approve $500 donation to the Halloween carnival?
I'll make a motion to approve $500 for the Halloween carnival.
Councill Henderson made the motion. I'll vote for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Councill Jekka made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the membership letter and invoice. Now, I think we all recognize the value of being a member of, of this organization. This and League of Minnesota Cities are the two that we are members of, and we make use of their council a great deal. The invoice is $7,678. Has that gone up much?
I don't remember for sure when it was last year.
I think it was over seven.
I think so, yeah, they are just. Done. Increase.
Increase the population, isn't it?
Increase the population? I believe so, doesn't say that on the invoice?
No, it's just general membership dues. Okay, any concerns about renewing our CGOC membership?
Last year was $7,701.
Sounds, sounds like that.
That's in the town bill.
Yeah, it did. It's on sale.
Yeah. Only through the end of the month.
Okay. Then I will move for a motion to approve our membership with CGOC.
I'll make that motion.
Councill Quaid made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Councill Henderson made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Tax forfeit land letter. Let me take this one, Tony.
Okay. So we received this letter from St. Louis County. They are looking at selling some tax forfeit land, so we received the notification as an adjoining owner notification, so it's prior to it actually going out for online sales. The property is actually in Duluth. It's on Martin Road. We own the property on the north side of Martin Road. This is on the south side, so that's why they consider adjoining property owners. I don't really see any, any value in the city owning property in city of Duluth, at least in this particular location.
Anybody interested? Okay, I think, I think we'll pass on now.
Okay.
Next, we have the first of two policies we're discussing tonight. First one is the employee recognition policy draft. This is the first term, so there will be no motions made. Tony?
Um, so the premise behind this, state law does not allow cities to expend funds on different events that are only for the benefit of the employees. It can be a community-wide event like National Night Out, but just for the employees themselves, it's not allowed. So in the past, we've always just done household donations for our Christmas party that we do. There is a caveat, though, that it is allowed if there is a policy that authorizes it. So this is a policy, I think it's kind of a combination of two or three different cities that we had looked at, kind of pulling that together, and then basing it on the events that we normally do here. So if you look through it, we're talking about the quarterly luncheons. So these, we've actually just started up, where city council members meet with city staff over lunch break. The few we've done so far, it was a bring your own lunch, but we're thinking we could do quarterly, where lunch would be provided for staff and council. Just gives council an opportunity to kind of share. council an opportunity to kind of share you know, what they're hearing from the community, what council's working goals, um, just so that staff knows what we should be spending our time on when we're here on a day to day basis. Um, so what we're proposing is that for each of these quarterly luncheons, it would be a not to exceed amount of hundred and fifty dollars per lunch, so make it fit within that, that dollar amount. Um, the second one is the annual holiday employee recognition event. Uh, so we do this once a year. After I wrote this, I'm like, I think we might remove the January, historically, we've done it in December, but it seems to be get beginning increasingly harder to fit one more thing in, so we were talking about doing it in January, but we take that out, that way it gives us the liberty to do it November, December, January, whatever seems to fit. Um, yeah, so basically just kind of a get together where council gets to come and thank staff for their work that they've done throughout the year. Um, usually that one, we've always just done the a meal. We should make, make a meal for everybody, so that one we put a not to exceed amount of two hundred dollars per year. Um. Uh, annual awards banquet, so the fire department kind of does something similar where they have a, an annual banquet to kind of hand out their awards and such. Um, the relief association actually hosts that for them, so um trying to figure out a way that would make sense for that to work, so we figured if the city just donated two hundred dollars to the relief association to help offset those costs and that way they can, they can use it how they see fit. Um. Retirement, so if somebody retires from city service, if they've been there for more than ten years, do a little reception, including refreshments. Um, and not to exceed amount of a hundred dollars. Just kind of goes through, you know, what we, what we would like to do, photo and article in the city newsletter, um that we've usually done a proclamation declaring that day is note the thing that that staff member has contributed to the city over their years of service. Um, also through this in there, if the retiree decides they don't want anything, then pay too. It's to honor them, so whatever they would prefer. Um. And then we also had well, if you're not necessarily retiring, but you're resigning and if you've been here for more than ten years, a, a similar thing, um not to exceed amount of fifty dollars and then just a small reception for that. Um. Talk a little bit about how this is going to be funded, and again, it can be we can use levy dollars for it if we want to. Um, we have an a pop can shed out there that's we collect aluminum cans from. We go and you know, bring them over to the recycle facilities. Kind of for years have been trying to figure out, what do we do with the money that that brings in? Um, so we don't have it dedicated, probably, I think it just kind of is received it into the general fund. So we're thinking this might be a great opportunity for that. Usually we will take in around a thousand dollars every year. Yeah, so that's kind of how we figured on our pricing on these things was just looking at how much we take in, how much we would spend. Um, we also have the pop machine in here that's um. We can fill, I don't know, it's our machine, so we can put whatever we want in that machine. Um, but kind of the same thing, we usually, right now, we just have the money buy, we buy the refills for it, throw it out in the envelope, so we're figuring we could incorporate that into this fund as well. Um. And then the, the only other thing that really isn't mentioned in here, so if we or it is mentioned, I didn't mention it as we were going through it, but um upon retirement, if we wanted to do an award or a plaque or buy a tree in someone's honor, you know, whatever council should decide that is allowed in here, we just didn't really put a dollar amount to it or spec- specify what needed to happen, so maybe that would be more of a case by case type situations.
Yeah, so in this thing here, ten years versus thirty five?
Right, yeah. Yeah. But that one is just if, if whatever item is approved by council would that would be.
I know when we first talked about this, um, I had a question about open meeting law.
Mm hmm.
With not necessarily the retirement things, because obviously they would be kind of open, but for quarterly meetings, how, how we get how, how do we deal with that?
So when we have the annual Christmas holiday luncheons, that has always been posted, that, you know, council is hosting this event and it, it's been open for people to attend. Um, obviously, the premise behind it is for council and staff, so I don't know, we've never had anyone attend those meetings, I suppose we could set up some chairs and they can
Watch us eat?
Watch us eat, or, yeah. Um. Yeah, so I would say if there's more than two council members that are planning on attending, it would have to be posted.
Okay.
Um. There's been, in trainings that I've attended, it kind of goes both ways, that you don't necessarily have to post it if the intention is a luncheon and there won't be city business discussed, but then they've also said best practices is just posted, that way your coverage should something come up, so. Um, but I think, yeah, for the quarterly staff meetings, those the purpose of those is to inform staff of city business.
City business.
Right, yeah, so that one would be memorable. So you could choose, you could choose to only allow two council members at those. And then it does not need to be posted. Or posted, yeah, and but, yeah, I mean, there's nothing you're going to be sharing with staff who's not able to attend or chooses not to attend these meetings. The same thing you're sharing with the public right now, so it's
Right.
It's not anything that.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm just concerned of we're all gonna be eating and obviously we don't have the funds to feed if twenty people show up.
Right. We should bring your own lunch.
Okay. Maybe, can we put that on the post?
We, we could, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, I'll look.
Bag lunch.
Bag lunch, bring your own bag, yep. Bring your own bag lunch.
We'll just provide for council staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
We could do that. Not a bad idea, actually.
Yeah. I don't know if they, they usually wanna guarantee a certain amount of.
Yeah, they probably would come for what, maybe we'll say a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
I don't think falling would do that for you.
Probably not, no.
As far as the retirement gift, I gotta share in this one, when I retired from the railroad, I got a, a brand new watch. Which, when you're retired, you don't really need a watch anymore. Like a seatbelt would have been a better idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. That's why it's something case by case. Yeah, no watches. No watches, no plaques, because, yeah, after you retire, you're not really gonna wanna put up a plaque though. Although you might. Some, some people may.
Any other comments from council?
I think it's smart to just post it and then, like you said, just bring your own bag lunch and people along with it.
Um, well, as I say, this is a first reading, so we won't be voting, but I will take input from anyone that would choose to add something, come up to the podium and let us know what you think. Last chance?
We can talk, yes.
Charlie hundred forty one ninety three Luzer Road, um, just wanna speak on behalf of all staff here that, um, we appreciate I won't say all staff, I'll say office staff, because that's who I get to talk with on a day to day basis, um, but we appreciate the thoughtfulness and the willingness to look into this, it's a tough subject. Um. To ask for, you know, none of us wanna ask for recognition or ask for special favors or anything like that. Um, but I do know that with the climate that we've had here recently, um, those of us who are in here and spend more time with each other than with our family, um, we are just grateful to feel appreciated. Um, and like what we're doing here is not in vain, um, it's easy to say, yeah, you get a paycheck. Um, but I come from a job before this where months before I took the job here, I was provided an entire all expense paid trip to Las Vegas from my employer, um, for a job well done. And so now having been here for seven years, um, and, and just giving kind of the opposite of that, um it's just nice to feel appreciated, so it's tough, uh, being in public service is not a highly rewarded job in any way, um, so just feeling more and more like a family these days and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Carol.
Good, here. Get her a, get her a watch.
Girl, let's get it anyway.
Would anybody else like to call this?
Lisa Walls, thirty eight sixty one West Tisher Road, um, I'm glad that you're all considering the open meeting. Um. And, and announcing it that way, because when she brought up oh, if you only wanna have two people there, so you don't have to publicize it, to me, that seems shady. And I think other people who might read the minutes or hear that would think that it's like. So I'm glad and I hope you all do consider the fact of just posted and it bring their own bag lunch, you know? So they don't get to eat what you eat, who cares?
Thank you, Lisa, thank you for bringing up that point. Anyone else? Okay. And we'll bring this back for votes in the future.
Mm hmm, yeah. Next, we feel, next council meeting.
All right, the next one is security camera policy, again, this is a first reading. There will be discussion, comments, but no motion or vote. Tommy?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to bring this forward, um. There has been discussion about the security cameras that we have here, um. We installed them here four years ago, maybe? Um. Kind of under the premise that, you know, we wanted to make sure we're protecting the city property from any damage. Um. And so then we included it in the public works building at the same time, we added it to the fire hall. Um, now have it at the water tower in the park, just kind of all under the premise that we wanted to protect city buildings, property, infrastructure, um, you know, and if there is damage, then we have a recourse for potentially finding out who did it. Um. So in, in researching, I, I have received some data requests for the video footage. Um. According to state statute, it is public information, so, um I did reach out to the league just to kind of find out, well, what, what's the best way to move forward with um, continuing the security cameras, cause it's been a large monetary investment and it has helped in a couple of different instances, um, you know, finding out damaged property or, you know, something was taken and we were able to find out who took it, you know, not no ill intentions, but no, it, they had helped in situations. Um, so they did forward or share with me, I think it was three different cities, security camera policies. Um, so this is again, kind of a compilation of those three policies grouped into one. Um, basically just stating what the purpose of the cameras is, um, the locations. I didn't necessarily, some of them spelled out the exact locations of the cameras, these I just kind of made it a little bit more vague, um. Talking about the retention in storage. Um, I'm suggesting that we keep them a minimum of seven days, I think right now they're just set to um keep them until they are recorded over, so whenever we need more storage, most of them, that's twenty, twenty five days ish, depending on how much activity and how many cameras are connected to each hard drive. Um. So that's kind of where I put recordings, more than fifteen days old may be overwritten. The system that we have, we can specify how long to keep the recordings. Um. Again, having it clearly spelled out makes it clear to everyone how long those will be kept, so if somebody requests something that is outside of that timeframe, then we have this policy to fall back on saying here's why we don't have that recording anymore, because we have to keep them seven days. Um. Then it kind of goes through, um, who will have access to the system? So right now I have it listed as the city administrator, public work supervisors, city council or authorized personnel. Um. Again, this is open, open for discussion. Uh, right now, we do have and I'm sure you have all seen, but we do have a T V in the office that we have some of the cameras going, um, you know, one for the recycle shed, so we can see if there's someone coming outside of recycle hours. Uh, also, they're helpful if, you know, Kim doesn't happen to be sitting at the front desk, then the rest of us can see those cameras and see if someone's coming to them. For that system, Robin also has access, because I'm not always here, so that way we have at least two people that can log in should the system need to be rebooted, locked out, so I would consider her authorized personnel to have access to that system. Um, but again, it can be open for discussion, we can have it, fewer people than that or or more people. Um. This does also talk about how we will post notices that there are security cameras going, so that the public is aware that they are on cameras and they are being recorded. Um, then it just kind of goes through, um you know, the intention is not for routine monitoring of staff performance. However, the footage may be reviewed in the event of violations of law, policy or procedure. An employee should not have any expectation of privacy in work-related areas. Um, you know, we, we won't have them in areas where there's an expect, expectation of privacy, so, you know, the bathrooms. We don't necessarily have locker rooms, but you know, there are rooms where people may change in, obviously won't have cameras in those locations. Um, then just kind of goes the use, disclosure, who we will share them with, um. But I don't know, anybody had any questions on any of them? Um, the thing I do have here for election, election privacy, something I did not even think of until I read the policy, but yeah, technically, um voters are not supposed to be reported, so like when we have an election, even the the T V news crews, we either tell them they have to be outside or you'll see on election day, sometimes you'll just see people's feet. That's the way they get around it, so they can still, you can still hear the noise, get the election traffic. Um. The, the one policy that mentioned this, that they were just gonna cover the camera, and I didn't really like the idea of having to crawl up and cover the camera every time, so um, I was checking with our I T guy to see if we could just, what it meant if we set it to not record. So that we will still be able to see it live, cause again, if I'm in my office, I can see it on there, if, you know, if there's assist, assistance needed out here, I can still come, it just won't be recorded, so there'll be no way for anybody to go back and look at that, it'll only be live. Um, so that's why that was in blue, except I hadn't heard that from you by the time I
Okay.
Put this out there, but now we know that, yes, that's exactly what the that to not record means, it's only live viewing. Um. It does talk, you know, a little bit about data practices, again, it is it is public information, if someone should so request it, so they can see it, although it has to be viewed to make sure there isn't any confidential information on there. Um. Yep. I don't know if anybody has questions on anything?
I know, one, one time you and I had talked about requiring people to come in to view videos so that we could control where that information has gone.
Yes.
Yes, so. Yes, so because it's public information, that wouldn't work, would it?
No, that is listed in here. Um, and even when I've talked to the state, the data, data records, um, they state law isn't really written to discuss videos. It's, it's pretty much all paper records, so it's a little ambiguous. So this in here does note that they can come in and view. Uh, yeah, members of the public may view camera records by submitting a completed data information request form. So in that essence, yes, they can come in and view it, but it will not be submitted to them.
Okay, okay, so that is a change from the practice that we have been doing.
Correct, yes. Yep, um, because we did not have any policy stating what our practice was. That's why we, we just handed it over this, lays it out a little bit clearer so that again, the council staff, public, understand how the cameras will be handled.
And then as far as the seven day, if it automatically does it after twenty or twenty-five, why even mess with it?
The reason being if, if I do get a lot of data requests, that's a lot more footage I have to view before I can allow the public to view it.
I see.
If it's a shorter period of time, it's a lot easier for us to manage on the data request side. Um, and when we were talking about, you know, damage to property, generally we find that damage within a couple of days of the incident. So we don't necessarily need to go back twenty days to see something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, that's kind of why I also put the fifteen days so you guys can can choose what, what you feel is an appropriate length of time to keep those as well.
Well, I know I have a security system in my place of business. I do keep it for two weeks and there have been times I've needed to go back that far to find something I needed. Anyone else's thoughts?
But are there any other like major changes to what our current? I guess, I know we don't have a written policy right now, but is there any other major changes in how we operate that this would bring besides what you discussed?
I, not necessarily. I think it just clarifies, um, you know, who, who can and should have access, how long we keep it. It was kind of, our system was set up by our IT person at the time and he just kind of did his standard installation settings. So there wasn't really much discussion as to any of these types of things.
And the seven and fifteen days, is, is that aligned with the three policies ninety percent?
I think so. I think, yeah. I think most of them were fifteen to twenty days. So the seven days is, is a little short, but again, we have I think seven cameras here, six or seven cameras here, six or seven at Public Works, three at the park, one at the water tower. So if someone from the public said, hey, I want all video footage from December twenty-second from seven AM to nine PM, that's hours and hours and hours and hours and hours.
Because you have to view it before we can allow someone else.
Correct, yes, just to make sure that the cameras didn't pick up. Somebody pulls out their driver's license and a person can see their driver's license, not anywhere. Has their employee pulls out their paycheck stub and it's got all of their deductions shown on there. That's, you know, those are
Yeah.
confidential information that can't be released. So we would have to hire a company that would then redact that information out from the video itself. So it could
Yeah.
It could end up getting crazy should that, should that happen.
I can see that. I don't have to worry about that.
You do not.
Also, other comments? Again, we're just, this is the first read, we're not making any decisions.
Yeah, I could see, go on, ten, ten days. I don't think we need to go for more than a week.
Any greater comments like that?
How about in regards to who has access? Right now it would be Tony, council. As far as full access, it's you, Robin and council, correct?
And Shane.
And Shane, yes, Sergeant.
Um, I did just recently give Kim access to the park cameras. Based on Shane's request because um, I don't even remember what had happened there.
Just, it's nice for her.
Yeah, so that way she can log in, kind of watch the cameras or if there was, that's what we've used it a lot for is rentals.
Oh, yeah, the benches time.
To see, oh, yeah, yeah, someone had painted the benches at the park. And so that way she can go back and look. I don't have to give her my login so that she has access to everything I can have limits.
Yeah.
What she has access to, so. And that's where the authorized personnel like you guys could stipulate it's a temporary authorization or, you know, whatever you feel is appropriate or.
Anyone, anyone else on council have comments? You guys are coming for us again. Hey, I will open it to public comment.
Tara Alshner for the two armed. Um, I'm going to try to get as much in as I can in my short time here. Um, but I do feel like this security camera thing is based on solely some of my data requests and things that have been happening to my family specifically for the last year and a half. Um, I have many comments in regards to this policy that never existed and it's now magically coming forth. Um, I'm going to go and just briefly overview because I really don't feel like I need to get into details of what's happened to us. My family has been tortured with these cameras. These cameras have been used against my husband. They have been used as an attack on his job. And now they most recently tried to get my children taken away. There is evil that has happened with the abuse of the ability to watch these cameras. And it is no one else's fault but the city. Because anything that has happened or anything that was spewed, anything that was gossiped, had to come from somebody who could log in. It was not a public. The, the data requests that were made or the videos that were used against my family were never fulfilled. So the only access would have been somebody who could log in and watch. And then if they decided that it was, you know, they wanted to give their opinion very damaging, very, very dangerous opinion of what they saw.
Tara, Tara, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate your concerns. We have discussed them, but this comment time needs to be in regards to this policy.
Okay, let's go to the policy. Seven days just allows Tony to not fulfill a data request. In a data request, she has set, she has ten days to get back to that person and then she has unlimited time to fulfill it. There are data requests that came in in response to the days I'm speaking of. They were requested on the ninth, but they were never fulfilled because that person didn't either receive the email or didn't respond, which then allowed the video that they were asking to be saved. And then that they requested, essentially it was like, oh, you missed the deadline. I didn't, I didn't hear back from you, so now that video is gone. That is shady. If we are transparent, we should just have it available. If it is the public's ability to watch, then if you, data requests don't happen when people don't have questions most of the time. If people don't have questions, you won't be overwhelmed with data requests. Do the math. They come in for a reason. And as far as these, um, let's see, gosh, I have so much, um, protecting city property, claiming that there's been theft, I, I get the parks, but mentioning Public Works, the Public Works camera was literally, you know, for the safety of Public Works. It was literally right pointing at the guys' desks for the longest time until I went to the meet the mayor meeting and I said, hey, if we're going to have cameras pointed right at these Public Works guys and my husband's one of them and they've been used against him, let's put one in the communal space at City Hall. Oh, no, that couldn't happen. I waited three more months, I went to the next meet the mayor meeting, I brought it up again to do a follow-up. Absolutely not, then next thing you know, the Public Works ones get moved. Now, to move a camera, it has to be a counselor approval.
And don't you think that's a good idea?
I, I love that.
Policy.
Yes, but I mean, these are things that I want. We have meetings in the works. I don't want this policy to go into effect and not be able to hold the people accountable who are accountable to what's been done to my family. I don't want a policy that all of a sudden is going to seem like, well, moving forward. Do you have a problem?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Keep it to yourself. Um, there is no camera in the conference room for the budget meeting. I just think that that's only fair. Um, you would save on data requests if you had the live feed. If you have a live feed in a YouTube channel, people can go back and watch the dang videos themselves if they want the meeting. Um, you, you talk about, you know, the, the things delete on their own. My husband, these, these cameras were used against him and then they waited months to just blindside him with a louder mill. Why didn't he get the seven days respect of just saying, hey, this was seen on the camera last week, what's up? I mean, it's, it, it's shady. There's shady, shady things and, and I'm, and I'm sorry, but that's just the truth of it. And I have been at the negative end and uh, we have now council members, I have the list of logins on, on the, the cameras that were specifically used against me. There is only one council member, Council Johnson, on the whole entire list. Why? Why do we have one council member that has the privilege of looking at those cameras? Shouldn't it be the mayor? Because she, the old mayor was on there and deactivated. I mean, do we really need, I mean, it just holds more people accountable when something like this happens. If you have a limited amount of people viewing, then you know exactly where to go to the source. And as far as the, the ability to go on, I want to know that certain people got deactivated when they weren't on council because I have a text message saying that it was refused to deactivate a council member when he wasn't here. So that would make a citizen of Rice Lake able to log into security cameras and see it's wrong, you guys. All we've ever wanted was fair, that's all I've ever said, just keep it fair. Things have been abused in very malicious ways and that's all I'm going to say. Please just keep that in mind when you write these policies.
Thank you, Tara. Would anyone else like to comment on the security policy?
Yeah, of course. Lisa Walls, thirty eight sixty one West Tisher Road. Um, I actually wanted to speak to you about, uh, I worked in legal with data compliance for eleven years and I right now work in electronic data. So I wanted to kind of just bring up a little bit of seven days is nothing. Um, fourteen days is still extremely limited. One of my systems that I have is currently thirty days and that isn't enough. But I do think you should offer a minimum of keeping it thirty days. Because like Tara had brought up, and it's a very good point as far as I'm concerned, is that if she's got so long to respond to you, to reply to you, at that point, it could have fallen off. And I, I'm speaking of that from experience from my job. You know, I just dealt with something last week where it fell off. So, so it fell off. So it, it, I'm trying to, from a data perspective, in your best interest, it would be better kept longer. And that's like I said, I worked in legal and compliance with data and now I do electronic data. So just trying to say what would, I think would be in the best interest would be thirty days from my experiences.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else have comments? Last chance. Okay, council, any input after what we have heard?
Would like to have Tony reach out and see what other cities do. I mean, if other cities don't have cameras, well, walk the walls and let's move on in life.
Good luck. All right, well then we will.
I would just like to say, um, as far as the recordings go and stuff, you know, what the cost, like it, it deletes after twenty-two days, is that what we have said?
Roughly, it's, yeah, just overwrites, yeah. It's not large.
You know, maybe we just look at if this is the issue, depending on what other cities do. Just looking at, coming back to this, looking at how many days it's available, I think would be good to look at again, just confirm that.
Yeah. All right, sounds like we would like to get some more information on length of time to keep it. Or possibly not having as bad. Good, then we'll put this on the agenda for next time. All right. I'm finished with business. We have the council meeting agenda changes proposed. Did all of you have a chance to look at what was sent in our packet?
I did, yeah.
Like this only on the screen?
Yes.
I need hard copy. Um, how would you like us to go through this, Tony? I mean, line by line?
Well, yeah, so what is included in the packet is really just kind of the cover letter that we could add to the agenda. And I can read through that if you want, or I mean
So did you, did you not send this out to everyone?
That to you guys for, yeah, for discussion sake, um, but everybody? Yes.
Got that.
Yeah.
Did you all look at it?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we can discuss what is on there as well if you want things moved. Otherwise I thought it would probably be more you and I discussing that to see how you think it should move forward based on their comments.
I did send my comments to Tony, what we could discuss it here tonight if you want.
I think we better discuss it as a group. We're making a major change to our agenda. You want to do it tonight?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we do the next two meetings, there's no rush on anyone else.
Uh, maybe tonight we discuss the first council meeting agenda, next, next meeting we'll discuss the second.
Sure.
Okay. All right, well then.
Do we have an electronic copy of what you have up there then? If you're going to go over it line for line, we got to have it up on the screen. Or I can just make paper copies, there are ten people here. How many pages is that?
I can email back.
It's two pages.
Yeah, this is front and back.
Okay, I'll send it to the center.
Well, the first three you won't need to read. You'll be able to follow along. Obviously, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have roll call. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have the mayoral update. And what that will include, I will make up a written report. That was a question I had. As far as written reports for both this and for the council reports in the second meeting. Will they then become part of public branch board along with the meeting minutes?
That was kind of my intention. Kind, yeah, kind of to hold that way. If people see what you're going to be discussing prior to, because it'll be attached to the agenda, they can come and maybe ask more questions on what your update is. Secondly, then, I don't have to type verbatim what you're reading off. Because that way, it's already there. And then in the minutes, I can just include any extra discussion that takes place that wasn't necessarily in your printed report. That's why I thought that's helpful to have it beforehand.
So you're not looking for a novel? Or a short story even?
No, and you could even do, you know, if you're just, if you wanna do bullet points, that works too, depending on what the discussion is. Yeah, you don't necessarily have to write out everything. But kind of the same with, like, council reports is, you know, are you attending a meeting that you feel everyone on council should be informed of? Again, the purpose of the council reports is, you know, Bob's, Bob attends the big meetings. What he has reperfected right from the council at that time.
Yeah, council reports are meant to be updating the rest of the council. That was the original intent.
Yeah.
Okay. The mayoral update is more for the residents to attend the meeting as well as, as well as you.
Yep, yeah.
Stuff that I know. Okay, so the mayoral update will be the written reports from questions that have been brought in at each meeting or after. If you wanna send in an email, either directly to me or to the staff email that I will get a copy of. Those are the things that I will address. And one question that's on here is, would it be helpful for this report to contain staff's answers to questions that pertain, that pertain to the whole community? I think it would. I agree. Because that's the purpose, is to give information and I certainly don't know it all.
Sure.
By any means. Okay. Fourth thing is public discussion as we have been doing. For items not on the agenda, the only difference will be that we will limit it to three minutes as we discussed at our last meeting. You okay? All right. Correspondence, as Tony says, we don't get a whole lot of that. So do we really need to spot on the agenda every meeting forward? I have two ways of thinking of this. Add it if there is a bone to be aware of, but don't have to act on. Or if there is something that we need to act on or at least discuss, put it under the business. I'm not telling you how it is, I'm saying what's on here so everybody can hear it. And looking for inputs, because this will be all of our agenda.
My notes were remove it, remove correspondence, just add it to the business. All that comes in, it's new business, period, so we can just eliminate one, section five.
That's, that's my deal.
Makes sense.
We were, um, Kim is in the process of scanning in old meeting packets to kind of digitize everything. And we were laughing at the list. I mean, there was three, four pages of correspondence listed. So every piece of junk mail that came in was listed, every advertisement, everything was listed under.
Better get every Uline book up there for me.
Which I think was kind of township days, like that's just the way you did it. So yeah, as a city, like correspondence, I don't, I was trying to look at what Herman Towne had for correspondence and there's, they still had a decent list, but again, I don't know if it's.
Where would we put, let's say that one of the residents sent in an email to one individual counselor. Because obviously, we can't share that amongst ourselves. How would all of us become aware of that? Where would we put that type of thing?
Right now, I'm usually not made aware of those emails that you guys get, so. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be good, good to share with the group as a whole, so.
Maybe council reports.
It's just missing council reports is where it should be.
Yeah. You can say what it was and what you did about it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then we have consent agenda. I brought up to Tony, she's having minutes or executive claims here. Every now and again, we'll have a resolution on there, one that doesn't really just need a lot of discussion. But we do have to vote on it. My preference would be, the consent agenda shouldn't have any separate items to be voted on. You know what I mean?
I get that.
I think resolutions are business. My opinion, so I've been looking for input.
Yeah, I think the consent agenda should be super, super quick. So I'd be okay with voting on that stuff there.
Elts are quick? So we're good with just minutes and executive claims?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, then department reports. Obviously, we need them. Um, I think they should be read so everybody hears them. Again, my opinion. The big question I see here is, should the staff sit up front at the desks on both sides of council? So we can ask follow-up questions if needed. I know staff probably won't like that idea much.
I'd rather that, I'd rather be sitting up there than be going back and forth, that's my personal preference.
Well, I'm gonna say, I liked it. I liked seeing that at the Herman Towne meeting and I liked seeing it at the Proctor meeting, so I'm in favor of it. But what do you guys think?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, do we need to give it more room for who we have?
Uh, the building.
Yeah.
Stop it.
I think we can make room. I was, I was thinking we'd probably have Mark and Shane at that desk.
Okay.
And then Carly and I here.
Okay.
So then, where do we move podium? Or do we set up another table over here?
Well, I think keep them in this.
Yeah.
Or can you move, can you move that desk, just slide it out and then the podium can go back to the middle? Residents to speak in the center again or? Or is that?
I mean, we, we could, I like that podium there. Because I think the residents that are here for the meeting can hear it better. Even though they're supposed to be addressing us.
We could, yeah, we could just slide it down.
Yeah. Sort of in front of the restaurant sign, they can speak to.
Yeah. Would you slide it, like, right in the bottom here and then that desk just slides out?
Sure, why don't you try that? Need help?
Yeah, no.
Nice way to get you to do all of it.
Because that's.
Yeah.
And that can be right here. No, I like that.
Or even, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'd still want to speak towards us too.
Yes. Yeah, because.
They probably feel more comfortable.
I thought that, I just was wondering. Anyone back there, anyone behind the podium will get lost, anyone back here. Just throwing it out there, not trying to make this conversation take longer.
We can, we can mess with that, but basic setup.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we made a decision on seven?
Um, one more thing on seven. A little off topic, but it's in seven, I emailed this to Tony for the longest time. I've been wanting to remove the sewer and water comparison spreadsheet. It's boring, it's tired. I love hearing Shane talk about one of those now. I think Robin or Shane could bring it to council, there's a big number. Million gallons of water missing, hey, we gotta find this, bring that, but this monthly thing, agreed and all. Does anybody know what Shane said here?
I don't, I'm gonna get.
Numbers in my head.
So that's one thing I, it's been hard to do with us for a long time. So I would ask, Tony, is that okay? I didn't hear Herman Towne even mention her gallons.
No, and I've, I've asked, like Corey's opinion repeatedly on department reports because there wasn't really department reports at Herman Towne's.
Yeah.
But he said he liked it because it keeps our council, which is more involved in the day-to-day operations than larger cities are, keeps you more informed. So I'm, yeah, I'm.
No, we wanna keep it.
I did, I did notice at Herman Towne at the pre-agenda meeting.
Yes.
There, they had all staff heads there, department heads there. And they each gave a brief, bold view on what's important this week.
Yeah, no, we wanna do that here. I'm just saying, remove the S and W.
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'm underlined.
But we do need department reports. Because that layout to where Herman Towne was good, because everybody got to talk to everybody about what's going on.
Yeah. Need to include it in our packet? Just so someone's overseeing that we don't have this huge water gap.
Yeah, I would too.
But we don't need to have it read.
Read, yeah. Yep.
Because it's boring.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, Robin can just note in her report if there's anything to reference on that spreadsheet. And that way, it's there if you need it.
I think that'd be perfect.
Perfect.
Okay, eight, new business. So this is stuff that doesn't require two readings. Um, like stuff that we need to buy, that one person cannot approve, has to be approved by council, but it's in the budget, therefore it's okay. Um, or something we have approved in past discussions or at budget setting time. That's all the same thing. There'll be an agenda item report for each of these, like Shane did for the mini splits at the last meeting. Here, we will have motions and voting. Does that sound good to anyone? You know, the other thing that I liked in the Herman Towne agenda, it said right on the agenda whether there will be a motion or not.
Yeah.
I personally would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, first reading, number nine. This will be the first reading on ordinances, policies, purchases not previously discussed at meetings. That she's also asking the questions, um, projects. Or do we wanna just talk about new projects? These are projects we've not discussed before. Do we want to just discuss these at finance meetings? Where would you like to have that conversation? And my thought is at finance meetings because we have all the numbers right there at our fingertips to determine, can we do a project this year or not? At a meeting like this, we're going to be saying, can you get us those numbers? We have orderly finance meetings. My. Is that yes or no?
Yeah, do we bring that, any new thing up and then just say these will be discussed at the finance meetings? Would you vote or? Or is it just best to just do it at the finance meeting?
So I, I do wanna apologize for you that are reading this in the audience too. This was like my thoughts. And Suzanne was asking me about this stuff previously, so it is, it is not written in a format that was meant to be.
Probably transcribed.
Thanks for printing that.
Yeah. But I guess, so kind of.
I've never seen it, I just knew that you'd get called out.
Kind of what I wanted to talk about in this, generally not to throw anybody under the bus, but these are usually things that come from the public works department or the fire department, such as the radios that Mark found. I just wanna know how strict we wanna be with the first reading, second reading type stuff. Because if we would have told Mark, sorry, you gotta wait a month before council can approve your purchase, those radios would have been gone. So, like, this is really more kind of an internal, so that I understand how much time you guys want to review something. How much time you feel, you know, the public should be made aware of it prior to you guys making a motion, so. That's kind of where these questions are coming from is. Yeah, I, I agree. If we're, if we're putting a big project out for bid, we can't necessarily handle that as a first reading, second reading. But yes, prior to it going to bid, council is definitely going to be made aware of the project, so. I just read them through this quickly as we're talking about it. Yeah, I guess as long as you guys are comfortable with something, that way I can guide Shane and Mark to say, hey, not everything can be an emergency purchase. Need to know tonight whether or not I can get this item, you know, like, how do you, how much forecasting do you guys want to see? And at the same time, we've streamlined our budgeting process, so they're not necessarily going into detail on all of those things that are in there.
Until it's time.
Right. So if you want.
I, I think first reading is a good place for it then, as long as we're not making any decision. And if possible, we, if it's not in the budget, maybe you'll have to wait till a finance meeting when we see what kind of funds we have.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not speaking for everyone. Not to say this or no.
You just gotta make sure we separate what is important, that needs to get through.
Yeah, like radios are, so it's out.
That I think you brought up. I think Tony can filter that out before she does the agenda.
Yep. And just so you, you guys know too, you have the ability to, when I send out the agenda, be like, no, I knew nothing about this. I don't feel comfortable under new business. So under first reading, you know, so that you, you know too.
Yeah.
You can do that. It's your, it's your meeting, so you can.
Okay.
You can say, I need more information, I need more time.
I like that. And then 10 is unfinished business, which is anything that we have discussed before and haven't finished talking about. So items that had a second reading, but we or the public brought up questions, so we didn't take a meeting. Are we in a motion? We can either make the motion and pass it or push it to a second reading or whatever we choose. But I mean, unfinished business is pretty cut and dried, I think. We've talked about it, we haven't made a decision yet. And then my favorite card of German.
So did you get what you needed on that for us, Tony? I think so.
And you and I can discuss it further.
Yeah. And then if we just do wanna kind of touch on what was in the agenda, which I think we've talked about it, it would just be nice if we could get an actual approval. Again, I don't think it needs to be a motion, because it's not a financial type thing, but do you want me to start using this at the next meeting?
I liked it. How about, did you read it? Did you have any changes or comments on it?
I kinda like the new format. So you have your initial discussion, you have explanation, like I think it just flows a little bit better.
The only difference is if we don't have a pre-agenda meeting, we're reading the resolution and immediately doing a motion and a second. we're reading the resolution and immediately doing a motion and a second, I mean, we may not know what's going on. But a pre-agenda meeting, that's how they address that.
So I mean, one, one way, you know, obviously, you have a first reading at one meeting and then a second meeting, so that you will, in essence, be able to talk about it twice, so that would really, oh, really only do with the, um, anything that's under new business.
Uh huh.
Um, and again, I'm going to really push for those agenda item reports, so that when you get the agenda, you have the full explanation as to why, again, go back to the fire department's radio request. Mark waited out very nicely. Here's why I'm asking for this, here's how we're paying for it, here's why we need to ask now.
Then, just as you're requesting that we have our reports to by Thursday, is that when we close the agenda then, and I don't care what comes up on Friday?
Yes.
So let's keep that in mind if we want to add things to the agenda. The Thursday before the meeting will be the cutoff. You know, okay with that? I mean, I'm not directing this. Okay, all right. That'll make it easier for Tony, so she's not putting together agendas over the weekend. Okay, anything more on agenda changes before our next meeting, or is that enough for tonight? All right, let's look at the calendar for next month. Monday, the first, obviously, is Labor Day and we'll be closed. Wednesday, there's community co- meeting at six thirty. Um, September eighth is our council meeting at six. The sixteenth is buying zoning at six. Mick, six thirty on Wednesday to seventeen. By second is our second council meeting at six o'clock. There's WLSSD on the twenty-ninth at five, at WLSSD, and then we're in October. Okay, um, if there are no further items, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Um, Officer Johnson, move for adjournment. We are adjourned.